Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting in the Lancaster County Council order. Ask that the clerk note for record that a quorum of council is present, that public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted to required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website, and that the news media was notified of the meeting time and place. Like to welcome you to your county council meeting. I would ask that you take a moment to turn off or place on vibrate any cell phones or pagers. Thank you for not wearing any hats or caps in the council chambers, and please be considerate of others in the room by refraining from conversations during the meeting. I ask that you please stand and join council for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation given this evening by council member Billy Mosteller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Father in heaven, thank you for this beautiful day today. Lord, thank you for this fall weather that we're getting here, cooler weather everybody's enjoying. Lord, as we go into business for Lancaster County tonight, Lord, give us guidance and direction and wisdom as we making decisions for Lancaster County. And Lord, forgive us our many sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Mosteller. Okay, now we come to the approval agenda.
We need to make a motion first to put her on the table. And then I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove items 6A and 8B, item 6A to move it to September 22nd, and item 8A to October 13th.
Just to be procedurally correct, we need a motion and the second.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
We have a second.
Yes.
I'll catch the gram.
Move, make a motion to amend to move item 6A, the recognition, to September 22nd, and then to move item 8A to October 13th.
We have a motion from Mr. Luis, a remembrance, a second from Ms. McGriff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. We go back to, go back. All right, we're going to go back for the formal approval of the agenda. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. Okay, we now come to citizens' comments. Please bear in mind that this is not a dialogue, a period of dialogue with council or a question and answer period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. Ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council members. Please speak into the microphones, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. Mr. Davis Martin.
Good evening. Davis Martin, 3530 Torrington Way, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28277. I'm on here on behalf of Weller Life Communities. We're on the agenda tonight for item 8C. I'm here to answer any questions when that comes around. I do have a few bullet points and a quick, or not presentation, just a slide, a picture to show, just to give more clarity on our product. So when that time comes around, I'll be glad to answer questions and provide a few more bullet points. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Andrea Mazzullo.
I need a step stool. Andrea Mazzullo, 8536 Hope Run Court, or Indian Land, South Carolina. So I'm here to discuss concerns from the overlook at Barbara Rock residence concerning the commercial development of, at the corner of Highway 160 and Barbeville Road. The developer has now erected an orange barrier fence 10 feet from the property line and a mere 20 feet from the Oliver Terrace cul-de-sac, which is in our community. And this is a mere 20 feet from our community's homes. Their plans, which they've posted online, show park, massive parking lot and a playground right up against this orange barrier with no tree preservation. This violates all setback requirements, and you're essentially from here through this wall, you will have a playground at the end of our street with nothing in between and a Montessori school. The UDO requires a type C buffer for what they are building. All parking areas on all proposed lots are visible from our adjacent residentially zoned land. Per UDO, Chapter 5.4.4A, this means that if any use of any building on any lot of this development ever has a general commercial use type, their required, the buffer yard for the entire property line must be type C and completely opaque during all seasons of the year. There were several hundreds of mature trees to help meet this required screening, but the developer has illegally bulldozed them while the county did nothing. The developer at this point has almost fully cleared the land, cutting down hundreds of trees that were 30 to 50 feet tall. Per Lancaster County UDO, trees with a diameter of 24 inches or more must receive county approval. We have personally witnessed the developer of the land cut these trees down without any approval, and in fact, they targeted the 24-inch diameter trees first. On top of this, the developer already violating several ordinances. They are also being deceitful in their plans for the land. They are filing application permits for a minor subdivision with a daycare, yet they are advertising on their website for commercial retail space. I have printouts from the Moody Group's website from today, and their website says, "First planned groundbreaking will include a Montessori school with retail and office availability and an outdoor play area." Their site says that the current zoning is general business for retail, medical, and office space. That right there tells you that they are not being truthful with the county of their plans for this land, and it requires a much, much bigger setback than what they've, they are doing, and they are cutting down all of the trees that were already there. We essentially have zero buffer now between the end houses on Oliver Terrace and Barbeville Road. So all of our noise is, has gone up in our neighborhood. It's complete eyesore. I mean, the land just honestly looks horrible right now. So we urge Lancaster County to stop this development and look into the several, several violations that have been happening on a daily basis for the last several weeks by the developer. Thank you.
Janine Clifton.
All right, Janine Clifton, 2023, Oliver Terrace, Indian Land, South Carolina. Hi, everybody. I'm back. I promise you I'd keep coming back. This is about the property and the development on Barbeville Road at the intersection of Fort Mill Highway in Barbeville. First, thank you. We do know that there are conversations to further investigate underway, especially with regards to our complaints that are coming forward. Sadly, like you heard from my neighbor, the property is mostly cleared, and any buffer between us and the development is obliterated. I can also tell you that while there have been questions on the two pieces of property and both being filed separately, they're both being developed together. The house on the second property has now been torn down. So all the land on two plots are now being taken care of as one developed unit. So I'm here to continue to remind everyone, this just feels deceitful to us. The UDO has been circumvented, and every, it appears to be complacency with what the developer's doing. It's still two separate properties. That's how they're following it. But strategically, it is planned as a single cohesive development that is going to have seven sets of retail space on it. It's not one or seven little offices. That Montessori school is going to have three renters in it, the school and two other positions. The plans have always been the same. It's on their website, like my neighbor said. So today I bring you one new nugget of UDO nonconformance for your attention is the play structure. The playground location really is sitting on our cul-de-sac. It's probably pretty dangerous, nonconforming. As an accessory structure, it would be too close to Oliver Terrace right of way at just 18 feet. The UDO 1.4.7B requires it to be at least 30 feet away. It's too close to the property line at just 10 feet. The UDO 224 requires accessory structures to have a 40-foot side and 30-foot rear setback. It's not even close. Too close to their proposed parking lot. There's no conforming eight-foot landscape or 10-foot screening between it and the parking spaces per the UDO for 432J6 and UDO 714C4. I just keep coming forward to you to please help before they drop concrete. I mean, they've obliterated the trees. So please help before they drop concrete. This is unfair to everyone in the community because if this developer can effectively coordinate and circumvent the UDO, this is going to happen somewhere. Again, someone else is going to figure it out. So don't let this developer skirt the UDO because they submitted a plan, a bad plan, that was rejected. They wouldn't revisit, they wouldn't revise it, so they're just going and building what they want without your permission. And I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have three electronic submissions. Ms. Simpson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and council members. You each have physical copies of these three comments at your seat. The first was from Elaine Bullman from Lancaster, South Carolina. She wrote in regarding her opposition to CP-2025-1648 Riverside Cove Point, which is a comprehensive plan amendment, which, for your information, she didn't write this. This is being heard at the Planning Commission meeting on 9/16/2025. She did write in about her concerns about roads that are already congested, inadequate traffic control, and fire and EMS department struggling to keep up with demand and overcrowding in schools. The second comment was from Larry Bennett from Indian Land, South Carolina. He wrote in regarding serious concerns about the commercial development being advanced beside the overlook at Barbara Rock. He noted that the property has been sown neighborhood business since 2019, and that developers should have to follow the UDO. His concerns that the development is a major subdivision disguised as a minor subdivision in order to avoid council approval, and that the plan violates tree save and commercial setbacks within the highway corridor overlay district. The third comment is from Diane Foster, excuse me, Dawn Foster. She's from Lancaster, South Carolina. She wrote in regarding her opposition to CP-2025-1648. Again, for your information, she didn't write this. This is being heard at the 9/16/2025 Planning Commission meeting. She has, she did write in that she has concerns about infrastructure needs associated with recently approved developments and the lack of follow-through on commitments for other developments, such as the donation of land or funds for a fire station from LGI. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. We're going to move on to item 7A.
Go ahead, Brian. I'd like to ask Mr. Marsdell something. If, is this up there on Barbeville Road, is our planning department monitoring this for any violations?
Yeah, they've been intimately involved in many issues with that development. Yeah, we can give you a report on it some more.
Okay. I've had some other people that's called me about it.
We're going to move on to item 7A, our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7E.
We have a motion from Mr. Mosteller, a second from Ms. McGriff. Is there any discussion? Not. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. We're going to move on to our non-consent agenda. We're going to move to item 8B, second reading ordinance number 2025-1983, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2025-1971 relating to the appropriation of funds and the approval of a detailed budget for Lancaster County for the fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2025, and ending June the 30th, 2026, to further provide for revenues and expenditures during the fiscal year and to provide for matters related thereto. The motion passed 7 to 0 at our August 25th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Harper, a second from Ms. McGriff. Ms. Harris?
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. We're before you tonight with the second reading of a budget amendment related to state aid, state aid to local libraries and the capital sales tax to proviso funds. So the First Amendment related to the state aid to libraries. Each year, South Carolina County receives an appropriation from the state to support public libraries. The state aid formula is based on a per capita rate of $2.75 applied to the 2020 census population count for each county. Our allocation for this year is $264,689.10, and we received these, this payment in two installments. So both the state memo and the allocation table are attached to the agenda packet. So as part of the adopted budget for this year, we estimated this allocation to be about $247,806. And tonight's amendment asks you to appropriate the difference of approximately $16,883 to support personnel calls for two existing positions at the library. And the Second Amendment related to capital sales tax to proviso funds. At the close of last fiscal year, the county had just over $1.8 million in excess capital sales tax $2. Exhibit 2 of the ordinance shows the approved project list for roads to be funded with proviso funding. And tonight's amendment will appropriate this $1.8 million in the capital sales tax to proviso funds towards two roads on that project list, Cleveland Street and Rise Lane. Council's approval is requested for both amendments, and I can answer any questions that you have about either amendment.
Any questions? Hearing no questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I don't have any questions, but I just want to make a comment. And I noticed it during the minutes that we just approved, and I didn't want to say anything because it's not worth it. But I just want to clarify, when we're approving the amounts for Rise Lane, I want to make sure that we're getting the appropriate bids. I am not in favor of the current amounts that are being allocated for Rise Lane.
Absolutely. Well noted. Any other discussion comments? No. Is there, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to go on to item 8C, second reading of ordinance number 2025-1984, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2021-1711 related to a development agreement between Lancaster County and Redwood Indian Land, Barbeville SCP-1, also known as Redwood, to amend Section 1A of the ordinance and to amend Exhibit B1, and to amend Exhibit C, and to correct the Scribner's errors in Sections 1.02 and to amend Section 1.10, and other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. McGriff. Have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Neal. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, council. So with this one, we are throwing the book at you. So it is a lot of information. I, I know this is second reading, and nothing has officially changed since the first reading, but I would like to kind of go over what we're doing again, just to kind of help make sure that we're on the same page. So this is multiple amendment requests. The first one is to adjust the ordinance to include all uses allowed in professional zoning. This property is already zoned professional zoning, but the ordinance specifically laid out the triplex and quadruplexes, whereas the actual part of the required information in the development agreement specified any uses that were zoned in PB. So that's just to make sure that our ordinance coincides with the document. The Second Amendment is to replace the Exhibit B1, to replace the conceptual site plan with a new one proposed by the developer. I requested this amendment, well, they requested amendment, and I'm requesting to you because it does change, because they are trying to use different dwelling types in their plan. So they're moving from the triplexes and the quadruplexes to duplex and single-family homes primarily with a couple of amenity centers there. The Third Amendment is to amend Exhibit C to replace the current development schedule, and that is kind of coinciding with Amendment 4, which is requesting an additional five-year term. This development agreement is set to expire in April, as is, with no changes. If you aren't in agreeance or don't prefer to extend the term, then a lot of the others will be moot points because I don't think there's any time for them to get everything going that they need to before April. This would be a, once these amendments are approved, if they are approved, they would start with the transfer of rights so that the new developers would be able to come in and take action on this development agreement. The last one is requested by staff. As we were meeting with the developers, we noticed that the ordinances were identified improperly. And since we were already in here putting our fingers on things, I'd requested that that be amended. There, as I mentioned, there are no changes or any other new requests, and we have no objections. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And as noted in public comment, the developers are here as well.
We have any questions? Hearing no comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes 4 to 3. Okay, we're going to go on to item 8D, second reading of ordinance 2025-1985, an ordinance to amend the unified development ordinance, Chapter 7 and 10, to define the use types large-scale grocery store and hospital, regional hospital facility, and provide for additional wall signage for both uses. This is Planning Department case number TA-2025-1306. The Planning Commission recommended approval of a portion of the proposal. The applicant requests approval of the entire proposal. This passed 7 to 0 at the August 25th, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Luis.
Okay.
Second, second from Mr. Mosteller. Ms. Harden?
The only change since you saw it at the first reading is to reflect the changes that Mr. Luis mentioned in the ordinance approval at the last one. That would correct the error, leaving out the maximum of 500 on two walls for the large-scale grocery store. And that is reflected on the screen.
Okay, do we have any questions for Ms. Harden? Hearing no questions, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous, 7 to 0. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8E, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 2025-1986, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Lancaster County to rezone approximately .5 acres, which is located adjacent to 454 Fox Lane from the low-density residential district to the medium-density residential district. Planning Department case number is RZ-2025-1613. Planning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and the planning staff also recommended approval of the rezoning request. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion from Ms. McGriff, a second from Mr. Mosteller. We have a public hearing scheduled, but no one signed up, so we're going to move on to discussions. Ms. Williams.
Thank you again. This is, as we mentioned in the title, a request to rezone approximately half-acre parcel from Ms. Roxanne Fenchel. Oh, that went quick. The surrounding property is zoned, a mixture of MDR and LDR properties, so both of the zoning classifications are pretty much an even mix in this area. Okay, we can skip that. The other, the other picture was a more zoomed-out picture of this exact same one. So since this thing's being a little temperamental, we'll just focus on this one. The box, the box that you see outlined in blue is the subject parcel. That is the 0.5 acre parcel. The other one to the up, my right, your left of the photograph is Ms. Fenchel's current home. That's where she lives. That's where all of her tax purposes, homestead exemptions, all of that resides with her. What she's wanting to do is just rezone the property, subject property, so that she can conjoin that with the current residence of hers in order to help with some of her tax benefits there. Okay, this thing is super temperamental. Thank you, Sherri. So long story short, this is more of just a administratal, ministerial rezoning, in my opinion. But we recommend approval, and if you have any questions, I'm here, and I do believe Ms. Fenchel is here as well.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a comment.
Go ahead.
This is in my district, and I don't have any issues with this. It's just trying to get it all on the land sound the same, so no problem.
Any other comments? If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous, 7 to 0. Okay, we're going to move on to item 9A, receive information and take desired action regarding appointments and or reappointments to various boards and commissions. Ms. Simpson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and council members. So this is appointments for the International Code Board of Appeals, which is a new board that y'all created. I included in your packet the, since it's been a while, what you did as far as that. This board would have five members and two alternates. When you first appointing, which is what you're doing now, three of those board members should serve two-year terms. So I gave one person a two-year term and the other two people four-year terms. So the remainder of the appointments would be for two-year terms. These members aren't by district. They are, either they have to have experience in technical codes, which would be design professionals, contractors, legal, fire, or building industry representatives, and two have to have experience in fire codes. So one of the people that has applied is Stacy Roberts, who has that experience in fire codes. He would be serving a two-year term, and then Chad Catledge and Harrison Blackwell have applied, and they would be serving four-year terms.
All right.
If approved.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Harper. Do we have a second from Mr. Neal? Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous.
Okay, and then the current board and commission vacancies and the upcoming board and commission expirations, those are just for your information in your packet. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to item 11A, executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair, I need to make a motion to go into executive session in regards to two items, the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding the Lancaster County Library Board, and discussion of personnel matters pursuant to South Carolina Code of Laws 30-4-70A, one related to the council, county administrator's office, and the county administrator's evaluation process, and invite Joanie Winters of the Winters Law Firm in to discuss the second term, our second item.
And we have a motion from Mr. Mosteller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Luis. Is there any discussion? Not. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous. We are in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, council met an executive session in regards to two items: The receipt of legal advice, subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding the Lancaster County Library Board, and the discussion of personnel matters pursuant to South Carolina Code of laws 3470A1, related to the county administrator's office and the county administrator's evaluation process. No motions were made, no votes were taken.
Do you have any motions coming out of executive session?
I move to remove Brittany Gungorna Smith from the Lax County Library Board of Trustees, effective immediately.
We have a second motion from Ms. McGriff, a second from Mr. Mosteller. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, is unanimous. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We stand adjourned.